We're going to call the room to order. We have two different, I think we're loud, can you hear?
The recording is good.
Okay, there's two different meetings tonight. So, we're here for a planning commission. We're first going to go through a Bryant Board of Zoning Adjustment and then we'll move into the planning commission. A call to order, the Bryant Board of Zoning Adjustment Meeting, date of June 9th, 2025. We'll have a roll call.
Stanton?
Yes, here.
Hooton?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Penfield?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Erwin?
Here.
Speed?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, so we'll proceed with our meeting. In your packet, there were minutes from our 4/14/2025 Board of Zoning Adjustment Meeting that you should have reviewed. Any comments, questions, changes?
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do have a DRC report from that meeting. You have your minutes. Who's going to read that for us?
Uh, just one. State Farm, 525 North Reynolds Road, rear setback variance. Richardson Engineering requesting approval for variance, and that was recommended approval.
Okay. We will open our public hearing now. Our first item on the agenda is State Farm, 525 North Reynolds Road, rear setback variance. Richardson Engineering requesting approval for the variance. And we'll let Colton kind of give us a little guidance on what's happening and then turn it over to our applicant.
Colton's still trying to get everything loaded up for the meeting, so basically, this is the State Farm that got that location on Reynolds, 525. Essentially, what the owner is wanting is to be able to build a small building behind the structure. He is not really asking for any additional parking, additional parking to make a connection to that building in the rear. It does front the school immediately to the west. And one of the variances, the question with the variance on setback is that the school is currently zoned as residential because schools can occupy residential areas as part of conditional use. But that particular property obviously is not residential, it's more institutional. So, they're requesting a waiver from that because otherwise they would require a 75-foot setback between them and the residential property. Tristan's here to present any other questions. Please address.
Any questions of the commissioners to Mr. Taylor's staff?
Because the school said, "Do you think about the rezoning?"
No, it's not a rezoning.
I mean, variance.
No, I mean, they're having a parking lot immediately from it, and they still will have a certain degree of setback. If nothing else, the topography alone will create a buffer between them. There will be a drainage basin in that section that will discharge down the hill, so that loss will be taken into consideration. So, no, the school's aware of it, but they haven't made any comments.
What is the setback you're seeking, you think?
It's 25 feet.
25, okay.
Which is, the building's still off of that. It's not, it's not on the setback line.
Which would be the typical commercial setback?
That would be the typical commercial. So, the building is roughly, I would say probably 60 feet, if you're looking at the northwest corner. Around about 60 feet, 55, 60 feet somewhere in there from the property line. Just due to grading, that site falls off towards the school pretty fast back there. I think it's like 7% existing, so trying to keep a 3% parking lot across that driveway area. You know, we're building up quite a bit, so we're having to slow down towards the property line and, you know, adding that detention basin there as well. So, it's not going to be right on that 25-foot setback line, but we just wanted to make sure, you know, we could place the building where it was and not have to abide by that 75.
No questions.
Any other questions of Tristan's staff? Okay, we're going to open it up for public commenters if you want to have a seat. Anyone in the audience who denied to speak for or against the variance or pose a question that the applicant or staff could answer, possibly. This is a public hearing, and this is your opportunity. If anyone's here for or against, in the public hearing, we allow the public to speak and then the applicant to rebut any comments. And so, seeing nobody that's going to come forward, I don't know if Tristan has any other comments or your good. Okay, staff, any other comments? Any other questions of the commissioners? Everyone understands the, okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Thompson?
In favor of.
Erwin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Hooton?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Speed?
Yes.
Penfield?
Yes. Okay, the variance did pass. We have no old business. We have no other new business. I would need a motion to close the public hearing tonight.
So, maybe we close the public hearing?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Right, we are adjourned from that meeting. And we will open our Bryant Planning Commission meeting of June 9th, 2025, and have a roll call vote for that meeting. I mean, a roll call.
This lady raised her hand.
Okay, I have something that's zoning off of Springfield Road.
It'll be in this meeting.
There's another, that's in our second meeting. There was just one item in that particular meeting.
Okay, that's, I didn't understand. I'll follow you up.
Okay. This is our planning commission meeting. That was for variances there, so we will have a roll call for our planning commission.
Edwards?
Here.
Hooton?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Speed?
Here.
Penfield?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Erwin? Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum, and we'll proceed with our planning commission meeting. There were also minutes in your packet that was emailed dated 5/12/2025, which were the minutes from that meeting.
I believe they'll be approved.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Right, tonight, we're doing a little different. We have presentations that we're going to listen to for our, from two consulting firms on our, the RFQ that was given out for our Comprehensive Growth Plan. We're going to listen to both short presentations, I understand. And we're going to flip a coin to see who actually goes first.
Does anybody have a preference? Any tails?
We'll let Rebecca call it. Oh.
Which would you prefer?
Pick one, I will, and there are going to be heads.
Uh, we'll do Craft and Toll.
Okay.
It's Craft and Toll. It's head. You see it, don't you?
Actually, for the audience, we're revising a comprehensive plan which plans the growth
through the entire city and in our, it used to be our Extraterritorial Planning Jurisdiction, which has changed a bit. But, um, so, we're going through a process of revisions, and there's two firms that are giving us. You've got the floor.
Seems like this seems to take a little bit longer than they passed down. Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate this opportunity to present to you all. I'm going to jump right in since we've got a short period of time. All right, so let me tell you who our team is. As you can see, the people that are here today, I'm Dave Roberts. Julie Kelso is here from Pepin School. Matt Haver is here from DPZ. Dixon for Craft and Toll. We have 11 offices in three different states, but most importantly, a lot of us work right up the road a lot. In fact, we have some Bryant residents that work in our office. And then you can see on the slide there Sharon Wood. She's with Land Use USA. She's an economist to do the financial side of the comp plan. And then DPZ, they do these projects all over the country. Matt's here from Oregon, and he'll be working closely with us. You'll see how we work together as a team before. They literally wrote a book, multiple books, on what we're proposing to help you all do, which is smart growth, a livable community. So, the knowledge goes back many decades. Chris is bad at those things, so he's got to go smart. Yeah. Yeah, I got it. It's going to go back. Now, it wants to jump. There we go. So, yeah, obviously, we're here to talk about you all, and we know that your community is a growing community, 22,000 votes, that you love your parks, that you love your schools. You have great schools, a lot of young families, and really want a plan for the future. And in fact, I've worked on some of those parks here with your mayor when he was a legislature. So, we're excited about being here to talk to you about possibly choosing us to do this project.
All right, thank you. My name is Julie Kelso. Thanks again for having us tonight. Every one of our projects has extensive public engagement, so we wanted to talk to you all about that. These are not our plans, they're the community's plans, and we offer several different methods for community outreach. Everything from traditional public meetings in person to pop-ups going out into the community where they are, meeting folks where they are, and really making a concerted effort to get that engagement. Various group sizes and makeups for those meetings. It takes a minute. Okay, well, then I need to just start hitting it a little sooner. I'm going to try it again. I think I'll just say next slide. Would that be better? Okay, so, in addition to in-person, we know that online is a big, a big piece of public engagement. We have different groups of folks that like to engage in different ways, and so we're always very cognizant of that. So, everything from online surveys, online interactive mapping exercises, you know, kind of a dashboard of public involvement opportunities. So, we always like to assist our clients with social media and outreach and engagement in that way. Probably works. And then in addition to that, we also do quite a few projects that are very large scale. They are inter-agency coordination with various groups. And so, just a couple of them that we're either presently working on or recently completed in Central Arkansas are one, is one out for the Marmel Pinnacles Conservation Area, the MPCA, and that involves four different state agencies, two nonprofits, Central Arkansas Water, City, County, Metro Plans. So, we're used to managing projects that have a lot of different folks involved in those from an agency perspective. So, as you all are working with your county and your neighboring cities, we do bring that perspective to the project. You may be aware of the Central Arkansas Regional Greenways Project. Bryant was a part of that as well, and that was a four-county project, including Sling County along with Metro Plan and 19 different municipalities. So, again, we bring that experience in managing large-scale projects with multiple project partners. One project that we wanted to talk with you all about tonight is for the city of Cersei. We did multiple citywide plans for them. We had a very extensive public engagement outreach. We had lots of different types of outreach opportunities. But as you can see on the bottom right, if you look at that big blue part of the circle, a lot of that input was gathered digitally in a digital format. But we still had great turnout at public meetings. We all, you know, we made those into almost like community festivals and events with food, entertainment, and all kinds of cool stuff going on. And at the end of that process with those community plans, the city was successful in passing $110 million in bonds, as well as we helped them secure some federal grants as well to help implement that plan. So, as we're moving forward, we're still working very closely with the city on implementing the different things that came out of that plan with their community. So, it was a very good partnership to really talk about. Another community that we've done a lot of work with is the city of Marmel. So, that started back in the early 2000s with their Strategic Master Plan, and we have worked with them ongoing on various plan elements and implementation plans, again, at all different scales and sizes to see that strategic plan flow through.
And both those jobs are the same size as you. Pretty good comparison.
And so, we wanted to also just share some of the instances that we've worked together. So, DPZ, Craft and Toll, we've enjoyed, enjoyed our shared projects. One of them being Pine Bluff recently on a comprehensive plan, very different situation than here, but still interesting coordination. And in that case, we're really taking a lot of their infrastructure elements, parks and storm waters, as well as land use and future growth and strategic planning into account. But we did want to really point out an engagement process that we really focus on and a partner, we call a charrette, it's a multi-day engagement where our whole team is in the city for a stretch of, say, seven days, and we combine a whole bunch of different types of engagement, in-person engagement, pop-ups and so forth, as we are creating ideas and strategies. So, it's, we're sort of putting the strategies together as we hear from people and then sharing those out, getting feedback and changing them live while we're in the middle of doing the strategic work. So, we're taking direct feedback from the public. That's a critical aspect. And so, one example that we've recently done in Arkansas, in Bendville, we listed their future land use plan, and we're moving on now to write their zoning code to implement that future land use. We had a great amount of interface with the public through the charrette process. We did pop-ups. We had a number of online engagements as well. This recently won APA Arkansas Award for Excellent Engagement, I think. You also did for Cersei this year.
So, the two award winners were.
And this is just to demonstrate, we're adding in that work. We've worked with Sharon Wood of Land Use USA and the decisions to look at community demographic background and also the housing market. What is the supply and demand of housing, and how's that going to affect growth? Built that into the planning process, but also focused on the storytelling and how to share the narrative with the public. So, it's not just data, but we're sort of pulling the takeaways and talking about what that means. And fiscal analysis, the fiscal conditions of the growth of the city were at the core for that particular process, which we've rolled into another project that's ongoing currently with Craft and Toll, is a two-county regional growth strategy in Pine Bluff, Arkansas. So, we're doing 31 cities, looking at a great deal of data, how growth, what the impacts of those are, and how the cities work together. You know, just like, you know, your position is influenced a lot by Little Park and Button, and you have really a major location within the region corridor and my schools and so forth. We're looking at this two-county area, at how growth and how all these different communities affect each other, and how that growth can be shaped. And really pulling all that information and communicating with the public, that's really the focus in that plan. So, that gets us, the technology uses, to the approach here. So, we never start out with the answers. We don't want to. We just want to hear from the people. So, what we'll look at here are four phases. The first we call understand and align. So, this is really about just getting an understanding of the community, dealing with steering committee meeting with them, getting their input on the process and how we should engage with the public, and doing specific one-on-one stakeholder interviews early on. At the same time that we're doing analysis, we're analyzing the data, the physical conditions, the market trends of the community. Moving into our phase two here, which is this engage and illustrate, and that's really about a lot of the public engagement through surveys, through meetings, more interaction with the steering committee, having that multi-day engagement process on the ground. But then we follow that up with more surveys and engagement with the steering committee to make sure that we're aligned in the right direction. So, at that point, that's where we're sort of figuring out, with all that input, here's what the community wants. And that leads us to the third phase, which is really to put that together into a document. So, we don't start working on that document until we've really engaged and made some proposals and gotten early feedback. Move that in the document, continue with additional steering committee, put additional public input on through to adoption. We've here included that stage four, as there are typically to implement a lot of your land use plans, in addition to pulling together the parks plans and transportation that you have today, often there's a need for revision to various zoning regulations in different parts of the city. And so, we put that on there as an option. We like to roll in from future land use into zoning when it's possible because that continuity is critical for actually seeing the change on the ground compared to future land use updates. So, this quick slide really is a proposal that's like, it's an 18-month process. This just breaks down as, you know, month one to four, and that understanding align, the next four to nine, and the engagement illustrating, and then we get on to delivering the strategy. And later, within that 18 months, can get into development. I think technology is on the table.
Yeah, thank you. So, why choose us? This is the shortest presentation we've ever done, so. Yeah, so, as you can see, we've got experience in doing this in similar towns. We mentioned Cersei, we mentioned Marmel, Pine Bluff, but we've done this all over the region. DPZ has done this all over the country, so we certainly have the experience to handle it. And we've worked together quite a few times. So, this wasn't just put together just for this. I mean, we are a proven product here. But we also think public engagement is going to be the most important thing. I know you did go after a bond that wasn't successful. I know at some point you're going to need to do one, and we've seen in Cersei how the right kind of planning can lead to successful bonds, so we'd love to help you with that. And we know that you have to work with multiple agencies, and you have existing plans, quite a few plans, parks plans, sewer plan, a lot of plans that have to come together, and that's what this comp plan can do, kind of wrap everything up. So, with all that said, we hope you consider choosing Craft and Toll DPZ team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, so, if you guys have any questions, we just wanted to reserve a few minutes for asking questions.
What did you do out there in Cersei?
Well, in Cersei, we had multiple, we had a park system master plan, an active transportation plan, and an infrastructure plan. So, those three components, we did kind of hand in hand all at the same time, and so we were able to really leverage that for our public engagement process.
You probably mentioned it already, and I missed it, but for our project here, about how long would it take to go start from there?
So, we've got about an 18-month timeline.
18 months, okay.
That was my question.
One thing I failed to mention is that Julie Kelso would be the point person on this project, to the project manager of these types of plans. You're going to see and hear from DPZ a lot, and, but Julie would be your point person. Where did you ride up the road?
How do you get the public engaged? I mean, what's the process? I mean, I.
Dangle food and tell them they're going to have fun. When you set those meetings too, if you can set them to 5:30 or 6:00, and tell them, "Come on by, we've got grills going, and there's some giveaways, and make it fun." We even have stations for kids, where they can get the kids in.
Do you like great mail, some advertising, some social media kind of thing?
Social media for sure. Our working team will handle all of that. We can create a website for you and have that dashboard.
Got you.
And we've done things like, in a community that we work for in Jefferson City, Missouri. They're big, you know, they were trying to do the traditional, "Let's meet at City Hall," and we just, we weren't catching the folks, right? We wanted to try to go where the people are. And so, we suggested, "Well, what's your next festival event?" And the mayor said, "Well, we have this great event that everyone comes to that's called Living Windows, and it's in downtown, and it's for Christmas where people are, you know, singing or, you know, whatever." There are all these different storefronts down the town, and it's a huge, huge public event. And so, we set up down on the streets down there, and we're handing out cards and QR codes, and had, you know, places and things for people to interact with. And so, we love finding those kind of unique opportunities where we know we're going to catch the public. And like Dave said, with food and entertainment and things like that, we're able to catch a lot of folks that might not otherwise attend a public meeting. But we also see sometimes with demographics that we have younger folks that are really just more interested in online, you know, watching a Facebook Live video or whatever versus an in-person meeting. So, I think it's really important to offer a lot of different ways for folks to engage. And like Matt said, with those, with those week-long charrettes, I mean, we basically have open storefront, and folks can come in at their convenience, and we will be there so they can stop by on their way home from work, or they can attend regularly scheduled meetings or whatever, so.
I'm assuming you're not in any major litigation, right?
Okay.
How long will you gather information from the public? Like, how long would that take, do you think?
It goes all the way through while we're developing the strategies, because as Matt said, even whenever we are, you know, even after that charrette, what we want to do is we have follow-up outreach and engagement because we need to listen to what we heard and that we've developed. And so, we, you know, we are constantly looking for, you know, what do you want? And then we have options, and we say, "Did we get this right? Are we, you know, is this, did we hear correctly?"
Feedback.
Yeah, so it's if there's more than, more than one opportunity, and they're really strong throughout the entirety of the process, really right up to the end, getting, you know, putting, before we put anything forth to get initial opinions from the public, but then to get feedback on proposals, feedback on proposals, to make sure that we hone things in and get them right.
And I'll tell you something that was really successful with the city of Cersei was that even as we were doing our early surveys, the city said, "Hey, what are you, what are you hearing a lot of feedback on? What are you getting in?" So, we started talking, "Well, we're hearing this a lot, and these few things are rising to the top of it." Some things that they were like, "Oh, well, this is easy." And they would just go out and start making those changes. And then, so, they started implementing throughout the process to see that, to prove to folks that they were being heard. You know, "We heard this, okay, we're going to go ahead and make these, these changes." And so, you know, that low-hanging fruit and being able to do that throughout the process, I think was really successful for them.
And through the process, we were able to identify some grant opportunities so that they could find ways to fund some of those easier, and even bigger things. And so, that implementation, we think, is really important. You can do a plan, they can get adopted, but we don't want it on the shelf. We want to see things start to happen.
Continue that.
And sometimes it's the funding that's the hard part. So, sometimes we can help steer you towards the grants that would help you achieve that implementation.
Well, Cersei, did you all do a lot of grants, or was it a bond issue, or what did you actually do there?
So, they had $110 million in bonds total. And then we wrote a federal grant for them that was awarded.
It was not $42 million.
Four points.
Or, no, a plan grant that could lead them to a $25 million.
To a $25 million.
Implementation rate. So, the planning grant hasn't started, but we helped them secure it.
Would that be a way for some of our citizens that's not able to get to some of these meetings to give feedback?
Absolutely.
At the website or?
Yeah, will be a website, will be online.
Interactive maps.
Survey maps, they can drop pins and information that we know that some people, we know in some cases too, some people don't have a car, and they can't get to something, so we want to make sure everyone's heard.
All right. Thank you, David, Julie, and Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Y'all, if y'all are prepared to leave, you can, you can leave.
Or we can stick around and help them vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all again, and your presentation we looked over a few weeks ago was excellent. It was good, well-written.
Thank you. Cersei, a shorter announcement. I'm going to go with Cersei.
Well, for the, while they're bringing the others, we've reviewed their RFQ material what, two or three weeks ago, five different, three weeks maybe? Five different people, five different groups responded, and we waited the material, wound up with two to listen to the reports tonight, the presentation. up with two to listen to the reports tonight, the presentation. And then at the end, the commission will make a recommendation to council, and then it's council's decision to choose.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a twentystaff and planning commission, which is member presenting.
Presenting to council, make the final decision. They're all here, I wanted to give them. All right. You know, that's James, he used to work with us.
Yeah, I, yes.
They're going to pass some material out.
James Walden with Garver. When you said short earlier, I thought, he seems like he's speaking from experience, and he's heard me talk before. But I am going to be the project manager for this project, I'm an urban planning leader with Garver. I've been there since '23, and then previously, I was, had a stint as the planning director in Conway, and then before that, I was Garver, so I was at Garver when I came back to Garver. I was, well, I saw much, I enjoyed it. And so I'm sort of the project manager on it. Joining me tonight is Vaskeeto.
Good evening, Vaskeeto with Garver. I'll be part of the core planning team, working with James and Juliet to prepare the plan.
And overall, our core planning team, we have another planner who will be kind of deeply involved, Julia Richie, she was in our Fayetteville office. Overall, our team at Garver, we have five urban planners that are based in central Arkansas and northwest Arkansas. And then we have kind of a wealth of in-house experience with our hydrology folks, our infrastructure folks that you all may be familiar with as well, that we can kind of lean on when it comes to coordinating with transportation issues, or coordinating with hydrological issues with the, with the recent drainage master plan. One of the first things we want to talk about is the project approach. So with this, you'll notice on the handout, we call it Building Bryant 2050. And that's a very intentional idea behind that. In looking at population projections for the city, in the next 25 years, we expect the population of Bryant to double, so to be close or over 40,000. That also likely will represent a large part of the build-out of North Bryant and much of the city. And so that's why we really call it Building Bryant 2050. We think the next 25 years are going to be extremely critical in determining the long-term future of this community. It's really at an inflection point, when you think about that, and the overall direction, where Bryant is heading, and where it's going to be long-term. With, with our project approach on this, we've got six overall tasks that we're really looking, and they can really be divided in looking at Bryant today, and then Bryant 2050. The first three tasks are really focused on Bryant today. The first of which is our project kickoff. With the project kickoff, what we'll be doing is meeting with our, our kind of core stakeholders, with our, with Planning Commission, meeting with staff, meeting with elected officials, meeting with our Steering Committee, going over whatever, what all we're going to be doing through the plan, and discussing that, and making sure everybody is on the same page, but also using that as an opportunity to get some first blush of input. Then we'll shift into our existing conditions analysis, that's looking at demographics, that's looking at doing a land use survey across the entire city, auditing all the parcels, and looking at sort of all these data points that are different quantitative data points that we'll be, we'll be pulling. And then following that, we're really going to task three, which is our, our community engagement. And that is going to be a major focal point of this plan. If there's an engagement technique you want us to try, we'll do it. But we plan on doing key stakeholder interviews, we plan on doing public workshops, doing drop-ins, public surveys, having an interactive comment map. We're so locally accessible that if there's something that happens, we can very easily come down and do some type of engagement meeting on it, that, well, we really want to make it a big feature, because we understand that for this to really be a plan that has buy-in, that has a long-term sort of implementation associated with it, really has to reflect the desires of the community. So we'll package all of that up, all that quantitative data, the qualitative data, and really get an overall picture of where Bryant is today. And then we'll shift into long-range planning. And with that, we'll go first into visioning, we'll do workshops with that visioning. We'll look at target strategy areas. There's areas in town that have, I think are really, really key and really important in terms of analyzing them and how they might impact development around them. And then we'll go about the work of just creating the plan itself, all of the different aspects of it, with the planned narrative, the growth strategy, the feasibility analysis, the land use plan map, all of those core elements that really will make it up. And then we'll go into plan finalization, and have more community engagement at that point. With that, we'll go, we'll come back, we'll present it, we'll say, hey, we heard your voice throughout this, we hope that you see it represented in the final product that we're delivering, right? And we'll go through those adoption steps to ultimately get it adopted. And that's kind of our overall approach with handling that. Now, farms typically have some very similar approaches, and so I want to focus on why Garver, why there's a Garver advantage, and why particularly you really need to select us. First is our local familiarity. We understand Bryant. Some of the first public meetings I ever came to, I stood behind this particular lectern, and I learned how to be a planner in part in this room. So I understand what works in Bryant, I understand what doesn't work in Bryant. In that way, we've got a big head start with that familiarity. And particularly when we look at things like the Bryant Parkway interchange. If you look between the Hot Springs exit and downtown Little Rock, there's really one exit, because Buc-E's is getting developed now, all right? There's one exit that doesn't really have a lot of developments around it. It is a generational opportunity for development. And it can happen in a really great way, or, you know, we, you know, it can happen in a bad way. And I think that is a really key issue that needs to be addressed throughout the plan. Additionally, looking at developing out in North Bryant, dealing with all of the issues with utilities. We had the fair share agreement back in the day, and the, and how that was arranged, and the balance of all of the infill parcels and greenfield parcels that can be developed are really largely in North Bryant. And so you get a lot of these questions of coordinating with Sling County, dealing with utilities, and potentially annexation, and all of those issues that we're ready to dive into, familiar with the annexation attempt back in 2008, and how that, the lessons that were learned as a result of that, and think that's going to be a key issue as well. And then additionally, quality of life and community identity. Bryant being sort of the, the front line of, of Sling County and an entering suburb, quality of life is going to be very, very critical for its long-term success. A lot of times, what you start to see happen on sort of those entering suburbs is you get a period of decline, and then you have resurgence later. We want to forestall anything like that happening, where we maintain a very high quality of life as the city grows, so that it continues to be a vibrant community for everyone. And then finally, we're also additionally currently coordinating with Pulaski County on Pulaski County's land use plan, been working on that, understand a lot of the growth challenges that are happening in the western part of the county. We'll be working very soon with Sling County to deal with some of their development issues that they've got, as well with the Planning Board. So we see those as kind of some, some major issues. I talked about our innovative and deep community engagement, we plan on doing all sorts of kinds of engagement with that, it's really, really critical to this, this. And then additionally, our experience with comprehensive plans. We've done more comprehensive plans in this state than any other firm. You can look on the map, and it's from E-Queen to Corning to Rogers to McGee. We've been, we've been across the state, small cities, large cities, wrapped up a project recently, comprehensive plan in Norman, Oklahoma, wrapping up a plan in Lottin, Oklahoma. So we have that local experience, but also a broader regional experience as well, that we have that expertise. And then finally, this one is both, I think, from a professional standpoint and a personal standpoint, Bryant very much matters to me. Some of my earliest memories are in this, this community. My family moved here a very long time ago, and I don't mean to make this a lot about sentimentality, but it is a, a community that means a lot to me. I want to make sure that this is a good plan, and I want to make sure that Bryant has a really strong future. It means a lot to me, so. With that, I ask that you select us. If there's any questions.
What are some of your most effective community engagement techniques?
Well, one of the things that we have used most recently, I think, with particularly the Pulaski County Plan, was that an interactive web map where people could leave comments. The thing that's really amazing about it is that someone can make a very specific comment about a very specific location, but then you can also look at those in aggregate to see what are some major trends that people are concerned about. So it gives you a very, very narrow, but also a very broad depth with that. A lot of times, using charrettes and public workshops, if you get invitations out and get people really excited about it, you can get a lot of momentum behind those, and those are really valuable, people really buy into that. But additionally, it's, it's, I think, using segmentation to make sure that you're getting representation. So whatever the approach is for the target that we're trying to reach, making sure that we're reaching those individuals, so that we're not just leaving at the chance that we might have some type of unbalanced representation in our community engagement.
What is your timeline as far as from begin to end?
So in here, we've got roughly about 15 months from, from beginning to end, is how long we anticipate it taking.
James, what other towns, or any towns around here the size of Bryant that y'all worked with? I know I looked through your things at Russellville and some other areas.
Yeah, we work, we, we do both long-range planning and ongoing assistance with places like Sherwood, Cabot. Currently redoing a lot of Conway's code, their zoning code, working on that, and we'll be working on a vision plan for Conway as well, working in Russellville. So, yeah, we work, work in a lot of communities in the surrounding area.
While you're creating this plan, do you see something that's grant-eligible? Do you have any assistance with, maybe you say, hey, guys, there's a grant out here for this, if you guys want to do this?
Yeah, I, I love pursuing grants, so when I was at Conway, I got $25 million in a raise. And so if there are those strategic opportunities, we have, we have government relations folks that, that can provide assistance with that, but also have a lot of knowledge about what different grant opportunities are available. It's, it's always exciting when you can come up with, you're not trying to fit an idea into a box, but rather you identify this, and then you craft a project that fits it. When we, when we won the raise grant in Conway, that was very much what we were able to do, is we, we said, okay, so these are all the boxes that we have to check, we're going to make sure we check every single one. And we did.
Not to be too negative, but have you ever in the last 10 years been fired from the job in midstream?
No.
Okay.
No, and, and it's, it's actually funny, I, I was a little bit down because my, my adoption rate on plans had gotten below 100%. And because I had, I had worked with a real small city up in north Arkansas, and the idea of a comp plan and zoning just did not sit well with some of the kids. It was too much. But after the tornado, they, they have since adopted it, so, or I was at, I was at about 92%, I, I got up there, you know, 100% again, so.
Any other questions? All of them. Staff, all good?
All questions for you all, we've asked over.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you chatting.
Okay, we're going to keep moving, and as far as, or any announcements from staff tonight, other than our presentations. Okay. We're going to let Ms. Hooton, Commissioner Hooton, read our DRC report for the record.
Starting out with State Farm, 515 North Rivers Road, site addition. Richardson Engineering requesting site plan approval, approved. Contingent upon effect variance approval and remaining comments met. Lifetime construction builders at 3519 Marketplace Avenue seeking a sign permit, that was staff approved. Parkway Elementary at 5200 Bryant Parkway seeking a sign permit, that was also staff approved. 6221 Highway 5, Suite 1, site addition for a deck, that's from Paul Clark requesting site plan approval for a deck addition, that was approved. Contingent upon agreement being put in place regarding the force main and comp station. Springel Storage, Area Drive, site plan. Garnet Engineering requesting site plan approval, which was approved, contingent upon engineering comments being met. Outdoor Storage Yard, I-30 Frontage Road, site plan. Hope Consulting requesting a site plan approval, which was approved, contingent upon remaining comments being completed. Subdivision signage for Midland Road Estates seeking a sign permit, and that was approved. La Da Da Learning and Creative Arts at 5920 Highway 5, Suite 5 and 6 and 7, from Rod Signs requesting a sign permit, and that was approved. Central Arkansas Truck Outfitters at 25633 I-30, alternative signage plan from A Sign Company requesting recommended approval of an alternative signage plan, that was recommended approval. Elma State Subdivision, 203 Southwest 4th Street, preliminary plat and waiver from Garnet Engineering requesting approval for preliminary plat and waiver for modification on half-street improvements and sidewalk requirements, that was a recommended approval. Bethel Middle School, solar field project, site plan. Scenic Hill Solar is requesting a site plan approval, recommended approval, and contingent upon addressing remaining comments. Havaland Edition, 2223 North Fields, commercial plat. CNN and Associates requesting approval of the final plat, and that was recommended approval. Big Oak Edition, Lot 24, 414 Pricket Road, replat. Richardson Engineering requesting approval for the replat, and that was recommended approval. And last but not least, Good Day Farm, 3205 Highway 5, commercial plat. Reagan Etherick requesting final plat approval, that was recommended approval, contingent upon staff being satisfied with the plat, which was approved by the PC.
All right. Thank you, Andrea. Tonight, we re, we revised our bylaws, this year, last year?
Last year.
Last year, sorry. And we did afford an opportunity in our new bylaws for public comment. I am going to open tonight's meeting with any public comment, this could be on any item in the agenda. It's not part of the public hearing that's coming up on any rezonings or anything, this would just be, you still would have the right to comment in that public hearing, but anyone that has any comments relating to any items on our agenda has the opportunity right now. So I would open the floor. All I would ask is you to state your name and address, where you live in the city, and then keep it to two-minute comment if possible. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wishes, yes, ma'am? Now, are you here for the public hearing?
I'm here for...
The rezoning?
The rezoning.
You'll have an opportunity in that rezone.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is just any comments, you can talk now, but you're going to get to talk in a second on that. Any, okay, if you don't mind the podium, because it is recorded, and again, name and address, and then just, you know, a brief explanation of any comments on any agenda item.
My name is Rosalind Tillman. It's been interesting to see all your names put a face to it. I have prayed over all of you, and the city council, and the scenic floor, that we can come to an agreement tonight on setbacks for the solar project. On May 28th, our developer came by and told me, right near my property line, they'd be building a solar facility. building a solar facility. As many of you are aware, I had not stopped or slept since I have been told that information. I stand here today to make sure the setback requirements are a part of the approval and make sure any additional panels will be, will have to be placed further back and not enroached on the 75-foot setback being approved by the city. I wanted to thank the following, Chris Tree, Phil Halter, and Josh Thompson from Scenic Solar, Lance Penfold, and all that served alongside him in the planning commission. And I personally would like to thank the city council for addressing all of my concerns continually this entire time. I know we only have about 30 seconds left, but as I was sitting there, my son showed me a picture, he's been making Minecraft photos with ChatGPT, and the picture he chose just now happened to be a construction photo of me building my home. My home means a lot to me. And I hope and I pray that right things will be done so that we can have the right setbacks. And I'm thankful all those that have been working this week continually to try to make that happen. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments. Anybody else in the audience with a comment tonight on any agenda item? Okay, we're gonna move on into our public hearing. We will open that up tonight. It's item 17 on the agenda, agenda. Spring Hill Storage, Erie Drive. This is a rezoning request from RM to C2. Garnet Engineering is the applicant listed requesting approval for rezoning from the RM to C2. I guess if Vernon wants to approach the podium. The way our public hearings work is our applicant will, first, we're gonna let staff give us an overview of what's going on. Our applicant will state his case, answer any questions, and then the public will have the opportunity to come ask questions, make comments, let us know if you're for or against it, and then the applicant will have the ability to make any remarks and rebuttal to those comments, and then we'll call for a vote. So staff, if you want to enlighten us a little into what's going on.
Yes, so this is a rezoning from a RM residential to a C2 commercial. This is over off of Spring Hill Road, Erie Drive, in this area here on the screen. It's actually this specific parcel right there, it's kind of hard to put the block pop up, but it's really this parcel right here, just right off this kind of clear dirt lot that you see. This is just for the rezoning of the parcel from RM to C2. Once the developer wishes to expand their self-storage area, they'll also have to come back in for a conditional use permit according to our zoning code, and so they'll submit that along with a, a site plan for that site as well.
Okay, any questions to staff at this point?
What is that cleared off area? Is that not the spot we're talking about?
So that is the spot right next to it. So this parcel right here actually came for, came through for a rezoning, conditional use permit, probably about a year ago, and they actually were going to expand the storage in this area as well. Since then, they started on their site work, and then they stopped, and they actually had a change of plans. So they came back through, instead of doing the storage buildings, they were just doing a covered parking. So that has actually come through as a site plan at DRC as well, since it's a small-scale building. But as far as the rezoning goes, it is for this parcel just to the west of it, right here.
So the parcel, the cleared parcel, what's it currently zoned?
It's zoned C2.
With, with a conditional use?
With a conditional use requirement.
What's the one to the right of the zone, Richard?
I believe it's zoned Commercial 12. Let me pull up.
I'll look, I just want you to tell us.
Oh, RB, residential. So it's what the other parcel currently is as well.
Okay.
But just to the south is the C2, to the north is...
So two sides of that, okay. Any other questions to staff?
So to the south of that is RB parking as well, looks like?
I think it's general storage.
Yeah, it's just buildings.
So both of these lots are an expansion of that existing business there, the Spring Hill Storage?
Owned by the same?
Owned by the same folks.
So what, what is the lot, if they make that commercial, if we make that commercial, the one next to it that looks like it has a pond, what is it?
That's RM too.
It's RM as well, currently.
I think those are the folks that sold us the land.
So who owns that? The same people?
I believe it was the same people.
That's what they said when we talked about it.
Yeah, area, I think. And it's the people that sold you both tracks?
Right.
Okay.
I, I know, I know there's, there's a family that owns the land back in there. Now, if the same member of the family sold us both tracks, I don't know that. But essentially, those folks, and they've recently rezoned a little bit north of their, quite a bit of their property to commercial as well.
But you reckon, I mean, you know, I know, because it is zoned residential, you'll have to adhere to the setbacks or ask for variance?
I think when we carried the, the other piece through a couple of years ago, I think I got a variance on the setback because it was pretty obvious that the land north of us was gonna go commercial eventually. But, but, you know, we're, we're not trying to get any setbacks or anything like that at this time. We're gonna bring a full and complete site plan through when, when the time's appropriate. We're just trying to get this rezoned at this point. And I, I know we've got some people from the public here. To me, this is pretty straightforward, but let's let them talk, and let's see what their issues are, and we'll come back up.
Do you have anything else to say, any questions?
I don't think so. I think it's, to me, it's very straightforward, so.
All right, we'll yield to that, we'll allow any public opportunity now. If you don't mind, state your name and your address.
I'm Joan Handy.
I'm Joan Handy.
2571 Spring Hill Road. My property is Joan's, mine's on Spring Hill, theirs behind my property. Okay, we, we came to the zoning board company meeting in June 14th, 2021, and at that time, it was decided that they would put me, because I have little kids I have custody of, it was decided they would put me a privacy fence between the property they bought in my backyard plus along Erie Drive. There was to be no gate along Gerri...
Erie Drive.
Erie Drive, because they said they could get to everything by coming through their storage unit. And because of, I wanted Erie Drive to be a fence up there because my little kids would run out there, and they'd be trucks, dump trucks, you know, heavy equipment. Well, nothing's been done. Right now, then, when they redid stuff, the back of my yard, instead of just, it goes sloping. My little five-year-old starts his little running, he can't always stop. I'm too old to catch him. I mean, when he goes, he, he goes, I want my fence up, and I want along Erie Drive.
May I ask a question? As I was at that hearing?
Yes.
I think that was the conditional use hearing, wasn't it, Colton?
Yes.
And, and so that was a condition?
Both of them heard in the same night.
That was a condition of the conditional use, and we're gonna let Vernon speak to that in a minute.
Yeah, they were supposed to have done that before any construction started.
Okay. Well, I remember that hearing, and I remember, the zoning took place, and then they applied for a conditional use hearing, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
Should we have been notified of that?
Of that hearing?
That things have changed as far as my fence.
Well, if it was part of the conditional use, code enforcement should have made sure the fence was put up. So, I mean, that's another discussion, but, I mean, let's continue to move forward with what we're talking about. So the fence and the, and the roadway, no access to the roadway or emergency access only?
They said they didn't need it. They would come through...
I remember that, but okay.
Right. Right now, then, give me my fence along Erie Drive, because the big equipment comes, and that little one will run, even the seven-year-old girl will run. I want my fence for safety.
I get it.
And along Erie Drive, I mean, some days, as you look at the photos, there's three big pieces of equipment, and dump trucks are constantly...
You're residential anyway, and it's a requirement they put a fence up. So, I mean, that's, that's it, but it was also a condition. So the fence and then the Erie Road, you're okay with them traveling it for emergency purposes?
For emergency, but not the big trucks.
So that's the big trucks, the big pile up and down.
Is Erie Road public?
No.
Who owns it?
No.
Who owns Erie Road?
It was maintained by the Erie family.
Erie family.
My family.
Okay, so are you part of there?
My father died, we all are part of it.
You look like an area, you're...
Can you, can you push her horse away, Lynn?
She's that right there.
Yeah.
That's the residential house.
Okay, I was thinking the other side.
No, no.
But you're okay with the emergency vehicles if the areas allow them to have an easement to get through there?
Oh, they tell me they already have easement, they've already...
I think they do.
Well...
When you talk about emergency, you talk about police and ambulances.
Fire, you know.
Not done.
Potentially, I hate to even say this because you're not gonna like it, but potentially construction, which is a temporary use.
So you're talking about the big trucks and everything?
Yeah, that's been going on for years now.
That's been going on since...
That's our main concern. They raise dust and...
What are they working on? There's not, there's nothing built there right now.
No, it's out there because of COVID, and they, and when it's dust, you know, when they're doing stuff, a lot of dust comes up. I've got an artificial eye. When that dust gets in my eye, I have problems. I have to go to Dallas to the guy that's gonna adjust it. And one, one other thing, I'll shut up. We were, we were, I was in my bathroom that has no windows. I go in there to change, and electricity goes off. Huh, we paid our bill, so I went and talked to the people. Electric company didn't do it. I called the electric company. They didn't, they moved the electric from their property they bought onto my property next to Erie Drive.
Electric pole.
Yeah, electric pole. They said they could do it because they had easement right. They didn't notify us, we didn't know.
Yeah, and I don't know. So let me ask, so the, the fence, the road, and then are you opposed to the zoning, the rezoning of this? This land is not adjacent, it's actually one property behind you. I mean, they're here to rezone this property tonight.
Yeah.
Then they will have to come back if they're gonna build on it and have what's called another conditional use hearing.
I would like to say, I'm not gonna approve of it till you get me my fence. You get me my fence, do what you want to, I don't care.
So if you don't, so tonight it's rezoning, the fence would be talked about at the conditional use, but it is, they have to put a fence up when they develop commercial next to residential. We're gonna let you talk, it's not your turn. So, so, go for it. The fence, the driveway, and then the zoning tonight is to change the use of this particular property to commercial. Are you opposed to that zoning if you get your fence and...
As long as I get my fence along Erie Drive.
You're not opposed to the zoning?
I'm not opposed, it's, give me my fence along Erie Drive to protect my babies.
Your conditional, but to be for it, is you want your fence, and you're okay with the zoning?
Fence in the back along Erie Drive.
Okay, okay.
Last was the fence a condition on the original?
Yep, as I recall, it was.
While on the fence, I guess we can ask him why.
We'll, we'll go there with Vernon. Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you all, and thank you for your patience.
Yes, we're good. We gotta let anybody else in the audience speak that wants to speak.
I just want to say that there are currently dump trucks running every day, almost every day up and down Erie Drive, currently. It's been that way for a good while.
Well, what they're doing is, they had it done, and now then they're digging it up, putting it out there and spreading it up.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your comments.
So that's just a dirt road?
Any other public comment on this rezoning? For or against fence, road, anything, except for the mayor, he can't... Hold on, anybody else? I'll give ample opportunity for any comments. All right, seeing none in a public hearing for rezoning, we'll allow the applicant to come up. We're here to rezone this particular piece, but I want, since you were here on the other one, I want you to address the fence and the road.
So you guys approved a site plan tonight, or it was approved at DRC right there. It's got the fence next to them, it's got the fence in the, in the middle of the Erie Road.
So it's approved, when you gonna build it?
As soon as I, as soon as I get term limits.
It's been three years.
A timeline.
I know, but this was, this was reapproved two weeks ago. But how can they wait down to a year?
He wants to get a clearing permit until he builds a fence.
Yeah. All right.
So timeline, timeline, and you've gotta get things to grade before you put the fence up. Give us a timeline.
What do you want?
60 days, 30?
Sure, 60 days, 30.
30 days.
Our five-year-old's eight, seven. All right, so you're gonna build the fence, what kind of fence?
Six-foot wooden, right?
Six-foot wooden, right. Okay, yep. And you got 60 days to get the fence built from the time we approved this. All right.
That's on any rebuttal process behind her.
So tell us the...
Approve the conditional use or approve this?
This is rezoning.
Okay.
I mean, he, so Vernon, you're still up here.
Okay.
Talk about the road.
You can see on the site plan that you guys approved that there's no gate in the road, and that it's just a solid fence, and we won't be utilizing Erie Drive.
So you're...
For construction.
For construction?
Well, I, I think, I think at DRC, we mentioned using the truck, using it during construction, but I think all that's done. I mean, I, I've been told that they've got that to grade, and we're ready to put the fence up.
All right, so let's just say no more using the road.
And that's only a new piece of property we're talking about rezoning?
Well, the construction that we're doing is on the piece that's already been zoned, that we already have the conditional use.
Well, you're putting the fence right down the middle of the road anyway. You go on to the center line of that little private...
Yes.
Okay.
Are, when are you planning to clear the trees on that other lot, or do you have plans yet, or is it, to be determined?
It's already been cleared.
I think...
Oh, is it clear?
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
I, I, I think that's right.
Could be wrong.
So that's probably what the trucks been going back to.
Yeah, well, what they've been doing is, we're doing a new kind of storage where we don't need the flat grades, where we're not setting foundations, there's, there's not...
You've got a site plan.
There's not a storage, there's not a slab underneath it. So we've been able to steepen the grades out there.
Okay.
And so what they've done, what they've been doing is pushing the dirt that they have on the side around to make a steeper grade. And then we, we plan to just...
I could just...
Build, build the one building that was approved at DRC and, and stop with that. See, see if we can get some interest in, in utilizing this new type of storage that we don't have elsewhere in the facility. And then once they get a plan together of what they're gonna do, we'll, we'll bring it, we'll bring it back.
You have no, they're never gonna be public entrance or anything through, off area, correct?
No.
Okay. Just emergency if necessary.
But... So you're requesting rezoning tonight to the C2. You know you have to come back for the conditional use to even be able to build any of the self-storage stuff.
Right.
And, I mean, we could put the conditions there, but, I mean, with this rezoning, you can pull a fence permit, you've already done your grading, I mean, what, we, 60 days to get this fence built?
Preferably, that's what he said. That's what I actually just was throwing out a number, can you...
Well, let's do it sooner, but, I mean, you're gonna be in trouble if you don't have it in 60 days. You're just gonna put a condition on it. And that, it's going to the center line of the road, so your statement is the road is not being used?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions of this rezoning relating to...
I've got pictures to show that the trees are still there on this property.
How you gonna get them out?
We, we...
I'm still confused, is there...
We're done, we're done pushing the dirt.
Are there trees on the lot being rezoned, or like the, like the satellite view shows, or has it been cleared?
I feel like it's been cleared.
Really? One of those pictures may have been.
One of those pictures.
This morning. Really? This morning, and y'all have pockets of them, black and white. You may have them, if you want them.
I don't... But you're saying you're not coming in down Erie Road to do any more clearing?
No.
Okay.
So you're gonna come through...
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're gonna come through the other storage area?
Yep.
Well, they probably would have a burn permit if they did.
All right. You good with that?
I'm good, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions relating to the rezoning request? You're aware of the setbacks next to the residential that other Erie families have, which I guess you can ask for your variance if need be.
Oh, yeah.
I'd suggest the fence being before that so that.
We, we have the setbacks established on the piece that we have the conditional use for.
Okay, alright.
And, and the site plan complies with that.
Any other questions, Mr. Williams? Okay, we've had our staff comments, our public comments, and our applicant comments and rebuttal. We're gonna call for a vote.
Hooton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Speed?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Penfield?
Yes. With caution, I wouldn't come to the conditional use hearing without the fence being. Alright, we're gonna need a motion to close our public hearing.
So move.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're gonna move on to item eighteen on our agenda of regular business. Central Arkansas Truck Outfitters, twenty-five, six, thirty-three, I-30, an alternative signage plan. A sign company is requesting approval for alternative sign. And if our applicant could move towards the podium, we're gonna let staff give us a little overview of what's going on here. They're catching up. They're having technology issues. I was here the night Gola Bone beat the Supercross out of there. Thing where they hang.
Still like a good story.
So this is actually an alternative signage plan for Central Arkansas Truck Outfitters. But this is located over off the I-30, close to, towards Alexander, kinda on the outer reach of our city limits. This is actually the location right here on the map. They're requesting an alternative signage plan for, because there's already existing freestanding sign on the property. But it's kinda right in front of this business right here. It's the SRS Building Products. It's actually owned by one owner. And used, that's the old LKQ, I guess, complex there that used to be there. So it was all one business. Since then, they have it actually leased out into multiple businesses. So there's a separate business here, which is Central Arkansas Truck Outfitters, and then SRS Building Products over there. So SRS Building Products is utilizing the, the sign that's in front of the building. This would, to be to allow a second freestanding sign there on that same property, as well as to have more than two hundred square foot in size as well for the signage.
So Colton, this was three different property owners. I mean, it'd be totally logical to have it in three different plats, three different lots. And there would be allowed three different signs for the three different businesses, correct?
That's correct.
Three different signage plan. So the reason for the alternative sign plan is it's all one owner under one parcel with three different businesses there.
That's correct, yes. That's the main reason. They're also asking for additional square footage as well for freestanding sign.
And the standing is two hundred square, right? That's what the code says, that he's allowed.
Uh, yes, so for interstate sign zone, sign which is a freestanding with pole sign within five hundred feet of the center line of the median of I-30, it should not exceed seventy-five foot in height and two hundred square feet in size.
Okay. And what is your hardships? What are your hardships that you think you need a larger sign than the two hundred square feet?
Just visibility.
Just visibility?
Yeah, people driving down the interstate or server truck building up says sign.
Have we picked, we got a picture of the sign?
I haven't.
Well, you have one up there.
We should be one in our.
We're not in our jacket.
There is, he said he had, he provided enough taken personally.
Yeah, I have another one that's going. Let's see. Does anybody else wanna look?
Yeah.
Actually, I'm. I think it's two ninety-six. Square footage.
You went from two hundred to ninety-six?
Yes. And though. This was just the.
Oh, the truck on the bottom, is that a lotted sign or just a?
Yes, sir. The LED display sign.
I think you said in the DRC meeting you're planning on later on getting a digital sign to go along the bigger sign.
So what, what they're wanting to do is they're wanting to get the sign with the top part on it that doesn't have the LED on it right now because the cost to do both is pretty high. But I'm, that's why I'm requesting, because he wants to come back maybe next year and add the LED underneath it.
Which that would be included in the total?
Yes, yes, that's.
Two ninety-six.
It would already.
That's the two ninety-six that I'm asking for.
With the digital?
Yes.
There as well.
Yes. I just.
The application that's on the agenda currently shows three hundred for just the top sign.
Just the top?
Yes.
So the digital later on that they may come back for?
I think this new one that he's, is, or passed out to you guys, it has three hundred, or two ninety-six total for both.
For both.
The overall, the top sign, sorry. The stagnant sign at the top shrunk down.
Well, he shrunk it and asked for two ninety-six for both sides.
Yes, sir.
Going ahead and getting the approval for both.
Yes.
Still asking for more than the allowed, which we've done in the past on I-30.
Well, so TMB Auto, which is the next business over, has the exact same sign.
To me, visibility isn't a hardship. I mean, I think we need to stick with the sign code the way it is at two hundred square. So that's kinda the way my feeling is on that.
The other comments, questions?
What's the square footage on the, the next one over you mentioned? Is it the site, is it?
So TMB Auto has the exact same sign that I'm asking for at two ninety-six.
I know on I-30 properties, Mobile Home Park, we did, Heart Hospital, I mean, there's a lot of them around Walmart. I mean, every one of them we've exceeded.
And I think that was before we redid the code, though. Am I correct on that?
Walmart.
The, uh.
I mean, the.
The Mobile Home Park, I think, came in after, but I think the other ones were before. But it's still, it followed the same kinda similar situation. I know one of the conditions for alternative signage plan, it says that one of the following conditions shall be met in order for an alternative signage plan to be considered for approval. And one of those is that the approval of the sign plan resulted in a preferable outcome to the residents of Bryant in contrast only advancing the property or economic interest of the applicant.
Nobody is there.
But it's the residents of Bryant in general, is what it's referring to.
So the TMB Auto sales, is that on the same property or is that a separate parcel?
It's a separate, separate parcel.
Okay, so it has its own requirement. Well, at one time it was, it were a homeowner, but the warehouse, Truck Outfitters was the same. I knew the same owner. Yeah, Tom and building. And then.
Because there's three different addresses for all three different.
There's two things going on here. One is the alternative sign plan, which allows the three different individual signs for three different businesses. I mean, if he wanted to come in and replat it, which I wouldn't if I was him, I mean, he owns the whole piece, he could replat it into three lots and get three signs, correct, Colton?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, by permit, by right.
Yes.
So he's just asking for an alternative sign plan because it's one owner that owns all three buildings, basically. That.
But there's still a restriction to that.
To me is a, kind of a no-brainer, because I mean, you go, hey, go replat it, and you can come in and, and get three signs.
Yep.
I mean, why would you make one owner replat his property?
Would they still be restricted to two hundred square feet?
Each sign would be. But, but one vote we're doing tonight is on an alternative sign plan. The second is on the size request for a variance to go up inside.
Yeah, so it would still fall under the alternative signage plan because you can't give an area variance, or sign square footage area variance. You can only, you're only allowed to ask for more under a.
So part of that alternative sign is asking for a larger size.
That's correct.
So it's all one dog?
It's one vote, kinda.
Two, two parts to it.
So you're planning on, if, if approved, building the top part first and how long is a sign, is an alternative sign? I mean, if he gets it approved, is there a timeline on building the lower one?
Um, so I believe there, once the permit's approved, I think you have twelve months to pull the permit and actually build it.
I mean, it would actually, just for knowledge, regardless of how the vote goes, if it was to be approved and you just built the top, you'd have twelve months to put the bottom one on or it would be revoked. I mean.
That means he probably not gonna, he wouldn't do that within the first twelve months.
So I mean, if, if you know he's not gonna do it in the first twelve months, probably shoe-in to just say, hey, let's back up.
Hey, I'm, what, what's the measurements on that top part? Is it eight by?
Eight by twenty-one. Hundred and six, hundred and.
Hundred and sixty-eight.
And you fit with that one.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that and I can go home.
Alternative sign plan tonight would be revised just for the top part of the sign.
Yes.
If you're not gonna build it, it's a waste of.
Yeah, still come back.
And you can come back and present it again and ask.
Five years later, whatever.
Okay, that's. And the sign owners may change. It may get better, it may get worse. Who knows? Alright, so.
So we need to change a special sign permit request then?
The alternative sign permit request is being changed on the fly right now.
Yep.
And documented in our minutes to remove the lower sign and the one, how many feet did we say?
Hundred and sixty-eight.
Hundred and sixty-eight foot of.
So that stays under?
Yeah, it's under our, our number.
Or maximum.
And it'd be approved as an alternative sign of the top one only?
Yes.
Any other questions of that? No.
I'm good.
Everybody understands why we're doing alternative sign because of, alright, we're gonna have a roll call though.
Speed?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Hooton?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Penfield?
Yes. Don't try and build the lower. Shut you down. Alright, thank you.
I don't need a fence built, so.
Alright, we're gonna move on in our agenda. New business tonight, item nineteen, Elma State Subdivision, two oh-three Southwest Fourth Street. Preliminary plat and waiver. Garden et Engineering requesting approval for preliminary plat and waiver for modification of half-street improvements and sidewalk requirement. Colton, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna go ahead and proceed with the waiver. We've had both our stormwater departments and streets departments look at making these half-street improvements. It actually make drainage worse in this vicinity because the curb and gutter would have to be elevated. And elevated curb and gutter does not transfer water. So also they're asking for a sidewalk waiver as well. But no, there's no existing sidewalks within this neighborhood to tie into. So I think that was a recommendation approval by the DRC as well as with special interest from public.
And the sidewalk was also gonna impact drainage as well.
Right, right. It's a very flat, very low.
I did go out and see that and I agree.
So I'll go ahead and end it over there.
You're gonna tell that to the council at their meeting?
Well, they're currently in the back.
Vernon, you're on.
As Ted said, the city bullied me into asking for the street waiver. So, yeah.
I will ask for other things too in the morning.
So. We, we are doing half-street improvements on Elm Street. We did have to modify it again. We, we went out with city staff to figure out what would, what was the best section we could put in there. So the section we have is a little bit different than normal, but, but the, the best thing for the situation. And I, I think that's.
And you're here for preliminary plat too, correct?
Correct, yep.
So why don't we have a vote on this waiver, get it on the record, and then discuss the preliminary plats? I'm gonna put them together, since they're tied to stormwater drainage and they're recommended. And we'll have a roll call vote to waive the modification on half-street improvements and sidewalk requirement.
On which road, which?
On the, um. Elm.
On Elm?
Yeah, the Elm Street.
Okay, I thought it was gonna be on the.
Half-street and modify on Elm.
Yeah, fourth, because Elm Street, you said he's going to have street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You're, you're just modifying, yeah.
Alright, so we'll have a roll call on that.
Edwards?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Speed?
Yes.
Hooton?
Yes.
Penfield?
Yes. Alright, now we can talk about your preliminary plat.
Okay. Um, so this is a piece of property that has, I think, believe one house on it, zoned right for duplexes. We've turned in plans to, to build three duplexes. I've done lots one, two, and four. Those have been turned into the city. We're also modifying a, a piece of property that's south of there that the, the property owner owns. Um, it's not part of the subdivision, not part of this preliminary plat. But part of the reason for the modification was we wanted to give a fifty-foot road right away back to that piece of property so it wouldn't be a, a pipe stem if somebody went to develop it in the future. You know, I believe, except for all of these, I mean, the waivers that you guys have just approved, we've met every other requirement that we've been asking the, out there. We've got some street lights and.
Good to go on their preliminary plat?
I believe the only thing that's outstanding right now is the, I think it's stormwater retention fee as far as.
Oh, that's right, we were.
Close to approval, though. But it's for the, in lieu of the stormwater retention.
And I haven't mentioned it, we have health department approval for the Senator sewer extension. Had to do. It came in about two or three weeks ago.
So where's the parking gonna be in the back?
Um, it's shown on the plot plan we turned in, I believe.
I think they were off the front.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking.
I don't have it. I don't think.
The, the one on Elm, I mean, we, the, the two, the two on the, the left side have parking coming off of Fourth Street. And the one, that lot four has parking coming off of Elm Street.
You go up to the, come for older people?
And we.
Myself.
I know we discussed, we've got all of our easements and.
Yeah, there's the, there's the plot plan that shows the, it shows the size of the duplexes we're building.
Sorry, get back to it.
This all went through DRC like a couple of months ago, but I had vacation last month and couldn't be at plenty commission, so they've tabled it. So it's not.
That's not special.
Brag water, don't you?
Okay. It wasn't true.
This is not in the heart of Bryant. It's just outside.
That's correct, yeah. It's just across Fourth Street where Hard Brian starts.
Right. So the, it. Your building isn't the heart.
It's, what's the zone?
R1.
R1, yeah. That's what I thought.
And then a little, the property to the south that they're applying that track day as far as.
Yeah. We're not requesting any rezoning.
Yeah, it's just, it, the, the zoning stayed the same. We just shifted the property lines. I, I think the R2 got a little bit bigger than it was before.
Any more questions?
I think it would be improvements to the area.
It will, it will be.
Yep. Alright, have a roll call vote on the preliminary plat piece of it.
Hooton?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Speed?
Yes.
Penfield?
Yes. Thanks, right, thanks. Item twenty, under our new business, Havlin Edition, twenty-two, twenty-three, North Rentals Road, Commercial Plats, CMN and Associates requesting final plat approval.
So this one's pretty straightforward. This is just a, it's a commercial lot currently, or a commercial property, and they're splitting it into two. Um, and it's just to follow, separate out this business right here from the other piece of the property. They do have access easements for the property to the, I guess, west of there as well, shown on the plat. And this becomes recommended from DRC and from planning.
Can you give us a GPS look, Google look?
So is that the actual plat there?
Yes.
Yep, it is.
Matt, yeah, I can't see it. I looked at it. Doesn't it, it has easements for all of the.
Currently, there was access easements that were needed from the driveways themselves.
No, for ingress, egress, but as far as utility.
To the west. Now, the utility easements were existing in regards to the setbacks that we set for the north and the south. They, they were claiming that the existing easements were currently in the setbacks that were already established.
But are they labeled as easements that's also on there? Because on our plat, it needing to be labeled.
Well, currently, as far as existing utilities, I was relying upon the city to actually expand on where those are. And if there is necessary that easements be designated other than what's on the plat, we're more than willing to do that.
I mean, we typically. I mean, we typically want those easements called out on the plat because it's being filed to record.
So where would the requesting easements need to be?
It would be around your, well, per, other puddling utilities around your water line and your sewer line.
Alright, where, where would those need to be designated?
I just think if you put them along your head where you've got your cross-access easement, isn't that fifty-fifty down that center line?
Yeah, what we have is that access easement right there has, is buried in width and it was basically based upon the axle area that was designated that's currently being driven on now as far as the causeway for the asphalt. We basically designated the lane that was already established with the existing parking as the easement.
But as an ingress egress easement?
Yes, correct.
But what if some utilities need to be ran through there for, I mean, the line implodes or something that happens? I mean, we require utility easements, I just think somewhere you gotta traverse those two lots with some utility easements.
So, you know, the sewer line on the north side of the property is, as he indicated, is within the setback line, but it does need to be designated.
It's, it's, it can be a setback and an easement, I mean.
And we have no issue with that, like I said, the, it seemed to me these, so for clarification, everything that is shown on this plat is currently existing.
I get it, I know.
And so as a result, we were unaware of where easements would need to be designated, uh, under the current situation.
Typically, in our subdivision regs and our plating and replating, man, we just require, and this is a little more complex because the buildings are there and they're not exactly square, but, you know, around the perimeter of the lots.
And if those need to be designated as setbacks and easements, that's why I've devised this plat for final.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I believe on the north side you have a fifteen-foot setback, but the sewer line requires a twenty-foot easement? You might need to know.
Now, one of the issues we're gonna have is that existing building will encroach it.
Yeah, neither side.
I get it, well, I would, it's gonna, if the easement, Ted, if the easement's gonna create an encroachment, we're just gonna have to live with it.
We have to live with it, because it's already there.
Yeah.
Been there a long time.
Don't, don't create an encroachment because then it's gonna create a title problem.
Yeah.
Understand that.
But let's just make those setbacks utility easements.
As well.
As well, and just keep moving.
Yeah.
Not a problem, that shouldn't be an issue at all. And like I said, the existing asphalt driveways that were coming from the two driveways that were coming onto the property are now designated as access easements for the, for the western property, which at the time technically by, by technicality wasn't.
So. Is that, is it just a cross-access easement, is there any reciprocal parking or anything like that?
Now, that, we haven't gotten into, we're assuming that that's of a prescriptive nature as to what has been agreed on by the tenants that were already involved with this.
That, is that still an interest back there?
Yeah, and so as a result, we did not, we, we weren't going to go into the weeds in regards to that because we weren't sure exactly how that would unfold in the future.
Yeah, I get it. But lot one and two are owned by the same people, right?
That's correct, and I believe that, you know, with the cross-access easement, I think, you know, uh, shared parking and all that, I think it's gonna be probably more on their lease agreements than it would be in this, regarding an issue for this plat.
What business is on lot one, I can't remember?
The old Union Bank.
Lot one is the, uh, lot one is the Union Plaza.
Yeah.
The old Union Bank building.
Had a Black Cafe in it, has the Black Cafe and some offices.
I thought it was.
And the crossroads are buildings to the north of it.
Only problem I had was the easements.
Yep.
And that should mean, as far as designation for those easements and setbacks, there's no issue.
And we gotta come back and sign it, so we'll get them. Okay, any other questions on Mr. Now?
So that'll be a contingent.
Yeah.
You'll have to do it before he signs the plan, yeah.
We can approve it with that contingency and get him a revised one. City records their plats anyway, so you're gonna have to wait on Colton.
I understand that.
Alright, any other questions on Mr. Now? We'll have a roll call vote.
Johnson?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Erwin?
Yes.
Speed?
Yes.
Hooton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Penfield?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Matt.
Amen.
Item twenty-one on our agenda, Big Oak Edition Lot twenty-four, four fourteen Cricket Road Replat, Richardson Engineering requesting approval for a replat.
Um, so this is a replat of an existing lot, um, in the Big Oak Edition subdivision, which is a pretty old existing subdivision in Bryan, um, they wanted to replat this lot into two separate lots. Um, both of those lots will be over sixty-five hundred square foot in size and have the RM zoning setbacks, which is what that is zone. Um, we did have conversations with the applicant and DRC to make sure they could build on those lots without a variance, and they said that they would be able to, um, and meet those setbacks, no problem. Uh, the recommendation from DRC and the planning is to approve. That's about it.
Alright, so, to elaborate on what Colton said a little bit, so, they are, it is a kinda funky shaped lot being kind of the curve of that road, um, there's an existing residence on there now that was gonna be removed. I believe it's probably, that new line's probably right down the middle of where that existing residence is at this time. So that will be removed and we did take a look at it for the owner and he could build probably a twelve-hundred, thirteen-hundred square foot house, no problem, uh, without having to request a variance. And we wanted him to be aware of that before we did the replat, because I know cities don't like you, you know, replating something and then later on come back, coming down a couple of months later and say, well, now we need a variance because we replated these things too.
Well, that never happens, that never happens. What subdivision is this?
Uh, Big Oak Edition.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Okay. Oh, I know where they, okay.
I think in the code.
Well, the bill of, is there a bill of assurance or anything? We don't regulate.
If there is, it's, uh, it's pretty old.
Yeah.
Want to say, it's like fifties or sixties.
What's, what's it zoned? Is it R one or R two?
RM, I believe.
RM, tiny effect.
And he's planning on building a twelve-hundred square foot home?
Twelve, thirteen-hundred, things what he, is what he can build on there. I'm, I'm not sure if that's what he will build, but that's about what he, that's about all he can get as far as sizing and stuff.
Maybe he can do a tiny home.
Yes.
Two tiny homes.
But it fits all of our setback requirements, Colton. Okay. Any other questions, Tricia? Alright, guys, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Ready?
Erwin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Speed?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hooton?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, you guys, y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-two on our agenda tonight, Bethel Middle School Solar Field Project Site Plan, Scenic Hill Solar requesting a site plan approval. If the applicant wants to approach, the podium will let. Ed, bring us up to date.
We have a conditional use permit on this that was issued for this, since the school is in a residential zoning here, which allows for schools as conditional use as well as public utilities. So, uh, this is not the conditional use, but this is a site plan approval. What is altered from this site plan approval is the last array on the southeast side has been removed to make an allowance for seventy-five foot, which is three times the normal setback between what would be considered a commercial zone to a residential, so nothing could be built within that seventy-five feet. Uh, Scenic Hill has also made allowances to build, to install a vegetative buffer, which will be of fast-growing trees that they will maintain and install. Uh, they're intended to grow quickly to height the twenty feet to offer that buffer zone between that and the neighborhood to the south. And have also had a part of the conditional use was to put in a fence as a black decorative fence also as well between that side, around the side. Yeah, with, with PDC, black vinyl PDC coating.
On the old side, how tall?
It'll be a six-foot standard, six-foot fence, there's a detail on the site plan for it.
That was part of the conditional.
That's part of the conditional, that's the security fence around the.
And we required it to be black vinyl chain link.
That's correct, that's part of the conditional use. The intention of this is to provide a, an option for the school to generate power and receive that amount of kilowatt in charge, uh, expense that they would incur normally and I believe it will bring back, what we say, about five billion dollars, I think it's point nine million savings to the school for, for the, what, next twenty years? Twenty-five years. Twenty-five years.
And if the school had came in to build a building there or.
It, it, it applied to.
Playground or stadium, we'd, we'd have put the same seventy-five foot setback on the school at that point.
With that, if there's any questions, if you would, please ask the folks from Scenic Hill.
Questions?
The fence that you're going to build, is it gonna go all the way around the property or just where the residential area is?
No, ma'am, we, we classically put a fence all the way around the solar array.
So, for safety?
Yes.
As I recall, that was a requirement for it to go around the perimeter.
The fence was there already, but we switched it to the debris authority, the black vinyl covering.
So nothing in for seventy-five feet except for you're gonna plant some trees, correct, or a buffer?
Yes, sir, in the fence.
The fence, the fence, a buffer of trees, seventy-five feet from that fence to any structure?
From the neighborhood, it would be buffering trees, fence, then the array.
Okay.
Yep.
Seventy-five foot, seven.
Right. You can see it how he's got.
And other than the, the fence and the trees, there's no other construction or activity in that seventy-five foot?
That is correct, yes. And we actually, you know, we, we're back seventy-five feet, we're actually back eighty-one feet to the leading edge of the array there, so we went six feet further. We had heard that one of the neighbors wanted to have the array a hundred feet back from their house and given a twenty-foot setback requirement for the subdivision, you add twenty to the eighty-one and you've got a hundred and one feet.
What's, uh, what direction do these panels generally face and what degree of slope?
Yes, sir, this is a fixed tilt system as opposed to a tracking system.
Fixed, it won't ever change?
No, sir.
Okay.
It's a fixed tilt system and so the, the module face is basically oriented due south.
Okay.
The, your question about the tilt, typically they're between twenty and thirty degrees to ground.
So they won't be at, they're gonna be more like this?
Yes, sir, correct.
Correct, not, not like toward the houses, more, so they won't be reflecting directly at the house?
No, sir, in fact, there's two things about that that are, that are quite important. One is, as you've just outlined, any sunlight coming in, if it, to the degree that it reflects off, it's reflecting north, further away from, from the neighborhood. Um, the second thing is, and most people don't realize this, there's no reason that you would necessarily unless you're in the business, but the module faces are designed to absorb sunlight rather than reflect it, right? So you'll, the module faces are typically black, they're designed to absorb as many photons of light as possible because that's how you generate electricity, so there's not reflective glare, if you will.
Any, no noise associated with these panels?
No, sir, no noise associated with the panels and the, uh, the only part that you would ever really hear is way to the north, it's the inverters and the transformer. Uh, those are, you know, hundreds of feet away and frankly, if you go to an array that uses string inverters, which we do, the only thing you really hear is a fan inside the inverter that's operating to keep it cooler, to keep the equipment cooler. You would be hard-pressed in most of these arrays to hear anything.
What, what type of heat would they generate?
So again, uh, you're typically trying to absorb, um, the sunlight, so there's not gonna be reflective heat, if you will, right? The other thing that's, you know, I think quite important about this is because we are not putting gravel in, because we're, you know, basically what you're, you've got here is what is gonna become very much like pasture, right? So, we'll mow the site four to five times a year, we're economically incensed to do that because if there's any grass that grows up above, but to shave those modules, we're losing money, right? So we, we would definitely do that.
What about drainage issues, did we get any of that resolved?
We got that resolved, we also have a four, four permit because there are an adjacent, a core regulated stream as well, anything that's associated with the runoff.
Well, Mr. Alter, you plan on building it all as one phase, correct?
Yes.
And you realize your, your approval was for that one phase?
Yes.
So there's no options to go further with it at this stage?
No, sir, in fact, Chairman, because we got this project put grandfathered for net metering and because the state law has changed, as I'm sure you're aware, of net metering, unless the law changes back, which I'm not foreseeing anytime soon, right? This is the capped amount that the school district is gonna be able to take advantage of. I would also say, Karen Walters, the school superintendent, is here, um, I'm sure she'd be delighted to answer any questions, but let me just give you guys the basics of the project. Scenic Hill is a main hall of the capitol. The school district is not on the hook for any of it, they have provided, um, this land, we will, you know, have a lease for the solar site from the, from the district, but they're not spending any money and they're projected to save about five point nine million dollars over the next twenty-five years of the contract. That's the first important thing. The second thing that, that I want y'all to be aware of, we're not complaining, I don't think the school superintendent is complaining, but as a part of the discussion of this, we said to, the mayor asked us, several others asked us, said, would you consider moving this back seventy-five feet? We said yes, but we want you to be aware that that is likely to cost the school district a couple hundred thousand dollars over the next twenty-five years and it's certainly gonna reduce Scenic Hill's revenue by a similar amount over the next twenty-five years. So the project, if you will, uh, by making this move has sacrificed four hundred thousand dollars. We're not complaining about it, but we feel like you need to be aware of it as well.
I think it's worth that. I think it's worth. So basically you're taking one row of panels out? What, what is your timeline, um, because all the members are gonna be looking at construction going on, trees being cleared and all that, what's your timeline from today till you're done?
Our hope, and it's, it's been somewhat inhibited by the back of the weather timing and so forth, but our hope was to have this concluded by the end of this calendar year. I cannot commit to you today that that's gonna happen because of these delays, right? But we are certainly going to be concluding, it's in our interest to conclude this as rapidly as possible because massive amount of capital that we're putting in, we're making interest payments on it, and we don't receive anything back until we're generating electricity. So we're gonna be moving as fast as we can possibly move to get the power plant up and running. Similarly, until we're up and running, the school district doesn't save any money. So, Ms. Walters and I are aligned on, on that completely.
If a child decides he's gonna get over that fence?
Yes, sir.
And he gets in, is there any danger in there?
I would say we would do everything we could do to make that very difficult. When we put these projects up in other areas, we not only have the six-foot fence, but we put three strands of barbed wire on top precisely to discourage people from, um, deciding to hop the fence.
Hopefully that'd take care of that.
Yes, sir, um, we, we also, we'll, we'll post some signs indicating that, you know, there's electricity and so forth. We have not had, and we've done thirty-five of these across the state, we, we have no known times when people have been foolish enough, shall we say, uh, to try to get through those barriers. In general, to do harm to yourself, you would have to be trying. You would have to go up to the correct piece of electrical equipment and you would have to take something heavy, steel, and start beating on it, you know, um, and I don't think a child's gonna do that.
What's the life expectancy for this, these panels?
Yes, sir, the, the rated. Yes, sir, the, the rated warranted life is thirty years, but what we have seen is that power plants run for longer than that. We, just basic facts on these modules, their performance modestly degrades over time. Typically, in the industry, it's about a half a percent a year. So, when you're thirty, you're producing about eighty-five percent of the electricity you started with. That's already factored into the cost savings that we've calculated for the district, that degradation. When our contract is, has run its term, my successor and the school superintendent's successor, and I don't think either one of us is going to be in that period of time, would have the option to negotiate with one another about whether the school district would like to mine the asset, whether they would like Seneca Hill to come back and remove the, the power plant. My best estimate, Mr. Irwin of the financial incentives at that time, is that the school district, unless we don't see electric use in that period of time, you know, going away, that the school district would strike a deal with, you know, my successor, whether that's one of my daughters or somebody else, right? And, and just reach an economic accommodation. It doesn't make a whole lot of economic sense to take a power plant that's been paid for and still operating and throw it out of the ground.
How many panels are in this field?
Yes, ma'am, rough number on this, this is a four point four megawatt array, and so that is four point four million watts, and each of those modules is just above five hundred watt modules. So, you do that number and you're, you're, you're in the zone of, well, thousands of modules. If I had my handy-dandy phone.
Okay, later.
Steve Jobs, I'd do that.
There you go, Ted.
So, Ted, as far as our site plan, my memory from DRC, I mean, everything else, that for stormwater.
Those calculations, I believe, were all matched.
Yeah, so all, all of that, I mean, our, it came as an approval with contingencies and part of our setback was some of that we were working through. Any other items that were on that site plan that we've not spoke about?
No, sir.
Recommended, recommended approval site plan, the setbacks we've worked through, which match our three times residential, which is our C two, C three setback.
That's correct.
Dr. Walters, anything you want to add to it tonight or thank you for coming?
Well, when Mr. Walters said that I could answer questions, I was. Not really. Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank, there were several people that came to meetings, came to the table. As I've said, you know, we want to be good neighbors to the property owners that are around us. I also think it's my duty to save the school money where I can. For us, this was kind of a no-brainer because we did have the property, we didn't have to buy property. For me, it didn't make sense if we had to buy property and do this, the math didn't work out quite as well. So, I just want to say thank you, Mayor Treat, several people, you know, got meetings so we could all get to the table and I just appreciate everyone working through that.
Thank you for sacrificing.
Thank you.
Any other questions of that?
Does this make the testimony bespoke? Are you pleased with this?
Yes.
Our only concern is that, that it's just part of the process of the seventy-five foot, I guess be arriving, I guess you could say.
It will be.
It's part of the site plan approval, it gets reported at the city, their permits are issued based on that, their CO, I don't, there'd be some type of certificate, it's not a CO, but a certificate to operate will be managed by that, and any future modifications would have to come back through the process, so.
And they did provide a letter that has all those requirements in writing as well. That's shown here and I attached it to the agenda as well as on this, let's see, which plans it? This plan here, I went ahead and attached the letter itself to the site plan, so it's all in one place with those annotations down here at the bottom as well. So, it's all.
So, our, yes, ma'am?
So, that's a big setback. If you want to add the panels, we'll say that this moving forward, this cannot change, correct?
No.
No more panels close to that seventy-five foot line, because they'll be giving us a hundred, correct? Or, you know, eighty to ninety.
Now, there's, the setback is being approved, it doesn't have anything to do with yours other than the fact it makes it a hundred feet from your house. But the setback that we're approving on their property is a seventy-five foot setback. Those arrays cannot be any closer to that property line than seventy-five feet. The only way that you could change that on any site plan, they'd have to come back for a, for a variance request, which would involve another public hearing, much like the conditional use here. But they're not going to, I mean, once you build it, they can't put it anywhere because of the federal law or the change, so. But tonight's would be approved as a, this, what we're voting on is the site plan that DRC recommends with a seventy-five foot, provides seventy-five foot setback with the vegetation and the fence in place. Okay, so we're going to have a roll call vote?
Irwin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Speed?
Yes.
Hooton?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Hinchell?
Yes.
Thank you, Irwin.
Thank you for your collaboration and your cooperation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm sure y'all, the whole permit is with the city. All right. So, our next item on the agenda tonight is item twenty-three, Good Day Farm, three-two-oh-five, Highway five, commercial plat. Reagan Etheridge requesting final plat approval. And there was a last-minute revision from DRC that should be on your desk in front of you. We're going to let Colton or Ted, I'm getting.
So, this is a commercial subdivision plat. There's actually four existing lots.
Hey, guys.
I have to move back.
Hey, guys?
Take it out, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Hey, Butch, can we?
You're in trouble.
Okay, come on, Colton, let's roll.
Okay, so there's four existing parcels over here, and what they're doing is they're wanting to combine a couple of them there for the, for the commercial project.
Just a minute, just a minute, Colton.
Where?
Matt was escorting people now, buying votes, asking for votes, I should say.
So, this is overall, Highway five in Hurricane Lake Road. So, this is a commercial plat for a site plan that's coming through DRC that's in the process of review. Apparently, there's four parcels over there, and what this will do, they're, they're unplated parcels, they're not part of any subdivision currently. They're wanting to combine a couple of those to make them into lots for this site plan. And then, as well as that, doing that, they're also going to dedicate additional street right-of-way and show the utility drain easements needed for the site plan itself. This was kind of last, last-minute addition because they had some changes they needed to make to the site, to the plat itself based on some of our staff comments. And I think there's still.
Yes.
One thing we might end that we, would have to be contingency, the approval.
I think they're waiting on completing the calculations for some stormwater to identify the stormwater easement, which will, before we get, it gets filed, they'll make sure that it's indicated on this plat.
So, lot two would contain that stormwater easement?
That's correct.
And they're going to use a big portion of lot two for an easement for that stormwater?
That's correct.
So, a contingency would be recommended approval subject to the fine-tuning of that easement being placed on lot two.
That is correct.
Did you say anything about the road, did I miss that?
I was saying a portion of lot one as well. Yeah, what they would do is just identify where those creative easements are for the detention basin and trench offside.
But if it's on lot one, that's where the site is, do you have to put an easement on your own lot?
I think it still falls in there for maintenance purposes.
What about the street, Hurricane Lake Road?
So, they're dedicating additional right-of-way for that, but half-street improvements would come through as part of the site plan approval process, so we'll be looking at that when they come back in to DRC.
That dedication matches our current road plan.
Yes, so they show twenty-foot existing on half-street, and so they're, they're dedicating an additional five foot there to make twenty-five foot center line.
It's a local road.
Yes, fifty foot total for a local road and some other that they have, or will have.
Can we have a tear all that gas line junk on?
So, that, yeah, that's an existing gas easement.
I get it, it'd be a big explosion.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, the.
So, I, I don't know if this is the place for this, but I'm concerned about traffic backing up at these, you know, dispensaries, it's often the case.
So, their, their current site plan actually has an entryway on Reynolds Road to Ransley. I'm not Reynolds, sir.
We have the current, the current curb.
It already has a driveway pass there.
And we're proposing a, a second access onto Hurricane Lake Road, so that, there's two exit points and.
What is your name, ma'am?
My name's Reagan Etheridge, I live at Ten Park Bridge, Malmell, Arkansas.
You're representing Good Day?
Yes, but representing Good Day.
And this is, tonight, it's just a plat?
Yeah.
Which I will say, with the like stacking of traffic, typically, a lot of our orders are online orders that you place before you get to the property, and you'll be scheduled a pickup time, so that kind of helps.
Okay, that's good.
The flow of traffic, not stack so much.
Is there a drive-through?
We are looking to propose a drive-through, but we're still waiting on that to be filed and finalized with the state as well.
And so, just for the record, there, it's my understanding from being in DRC, their building and slot size fits the minimum, I mean, the amount to have DRC approval for site plan. So, and their need for here is for a plat, and then we'll have to go in, unless they have any variances or changes or waivers, I mean, if they do all their half-street improvements and their stormwater and their setbacks and everything, DRC can approve it. If not, then they have to come back to us for that variance or waiver, whatever.
That's correct.
So, it has to meet the box when it comes through DRC or it comes back.
And we have a, a meeting scheduled with Public Works this coming Wednesday to work through those calculations needed so we can finalize our design and engineering on the site.
I know some of those places produce quite a bad smell, is this going to have that?
That's not the case typically. Well, we haven't placed that, we store all of our product in a vault that's buried near concrete walls. No product is stored on the sales floor itself, so it's always sealed and prepackaged, there's never any open containers on the property.
And you plan on doing the half-street improvements?
We do, yes. Yep, those are being incorporated into the site plan currently.
So, basically, is this the same type of business that's down on Alexander Road and Highway five in Alexander?
I believe they help us to produce medical cards, I'm not sure if they actually sell the product or not at that facility.
I think they do.
They do.
It's a similar one, I think there's one on Cheneau or Cantrell.
Do you have other facilities?
We do, yeah, the facility off of Cantrell is ours, and so is the one off Cheneau near Trader Joe's.
Yes.
Cheneau, that's what I, yeah.
Yes. And this one, the license that will be used for this facility is actually the facility that's operating currently in Hinsley, so it's not an additional license that was issued for this dispensary, it's for relocating to better serve our customer base.
Tonight is a vote on a replat. Everything fits the box on the replat except for the drainage easement. We would be recommended approval subject to staff being satisfied with the drainage easement locations.
That's correct.
Want to understand the vote? A roll call vote?
Edwards?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Speed?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hooton?
Yes.
Hinchell?
Yes. Okay, get the easement worked out, figure out how to get it signed. All right.
Thank you.
Go, stay, whatever, but I don't blame you for leaving, you waited a long time.
Yes.
I appreciate y'all's time.
We have one last item on our agenda, twenty-four, our comprehensive growth plan, RFQ, recommendation, recommendation from consulting firms for the city's comprehensive growth plan. We let Ted lead our discussion, I think.
So, within your package, also the selection process that was accomplished by certain staff members as well, our student planning commission was part of that, we'd like to point out that on the selection committee, we also had police, chief, fire, so, and I had myself and Colton and a few others. So, within that ranking system, you can see the two that we, the top two that you got to review was, and you want to pick selected, was Garber Consulting and the next being Craft and Toll, both of them were outstanding.
They did a great job.
They did a great job. If you guys have any questions in particular to the knowledge that the folks that went through and the vague person, I think we were all kind of there, so if you've got some questions regarding that, I think we can answer that. The process is in a request for qualifications, you do not discuss price. Once we select that part, that, that we take them on, defend it to council, and let them do a presentation for them, and then at that point, we will begin a negotiation and contract in price. If we can't reach a level of what we want with the scope of work, then we, we go to the second, second, so that's why you saw two of them. So, that being, we kind of, or add a, add a recommendation for now so that we can present that, that party to council later on this month.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
Who did the previous comprehensive growth plan?
Garber did that back in, we think it was around 2010, no, it wasn't.
Well, it was, give me just a second, I can tell you.
That's okay, I just wondered who, I didn't need to know.
What I can tell you is, is James Walton was pretty substantial in helping us with the walk-by drive that we've adopted as our master transportation plan as well as our trail plan. They are also, were pretty heavy into our code and updating our code. As he pointed out, they did our, they did our stormwater master drainage plan that's the council adopted during the last council session, and they also engaged in our Bryant Parkway.
So, the previous comprehensive growth is what, was, was Garber back in twenty?
So, the, the previous comprehensive growth plan that was actually adopted was in 2010, I think, 2009, 2010, and that was Urban Planning Association.
Okay.
Jim Monahan.
Yes.
Okay. And James worked for Jim?
Yeah.
We also, would like to also point out too, is the, the GIS that we have, a lot of that information was actually entered in by James Walton.
That's right. So, what, what about the grant options? I mean, is that something that really can happen during this process?
Yes, I mean, I think that's kind of the direction, maybe the mayor would like to speak about that, but.
One of them made a difference, brought that up a lot.
Yes.
That's what caught my attention.
Yeah.
I need to. I also reflect that one of them has more, more than just regional experience, they have experience all over and bring in new ideas from new regions, and that's kind of a positive to me.
Yes, we have not adjourned.
Okay.
We have what?
We've not adjourned, so we're still being recorded.
Yes.
Have you had any challenge with either one of the companies that?
No, well, we've had, Craft and Toll has worked in the city as, as part of developers, they've actually worked for the city as well, as well as Garber. Now, I don't believe Garber's ever worked for a developer, but they mostly have consulted for the city.
Did Craft and Toll do the junior high and all that, or Parkway Elementary?
Ah, you know what else was told, I know they did part, they did some follow-up work with the department.
I have worked with Craft and Toll in various plans for like. I have worked with Craft and Toll in various plans for like England and Alono, and they're top-notch.
I would also like to point out that Garber was also selected by Selene County to update their codes, some of their codes for the planning commission's codes.
I think you can't go wrong with either one of these. It's just, it's really tough.
I love James and his approach, and they, Craft and Toll impressed me tonight, too.
They did.
I mean, very sharp. He's easy, very...
Well, I'm from Cersei, and I know Cersei has grown and have, actually have friends who still live up there. And Cersei's a great place to grow up and live, and development-wise.
I have family members there as well, and, yeah, I mean, their growth is amazing.
Yeah, by far.
So, you think Garber 2 has the ability to move in some directions of some grants and...
They, we had worked with Garber, like in the Parkway in particular. There were times we had some major shortcomings financially that Garber provided assistance in maintaining grants for them. But they had that need, at least helping us with it. Also, would like to point out too, I mean, both their timelines were similar. Obviously, with the, if their key structure stays in place with Garber, there's probably less of a learning curve because they're established with history with the city.
There is some merit in cross-pollination.
There is.
I agree.
Something about that.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that somebody can't build on somebody else's ideas.
Right, yeah.
Mayor Treat, do you have to comment on this?
Just quick, I think council members here, you guys, this will be heavy lifting for the next 15 months. It'll probably be our legacy to the city moving forward, this plan that we're going to work really hard on. This will be what directs this city for the next 25 years, so no pressure. I guess my biggest thing is we all got to be ready to spend a lot of time, community engagement, a lot of time in these meetings.
That's one thing I know, Craft and Toll was talking about a lot of community engagement, gave some examples.
Yeah.
Right.
They were planned, they planned for that question. I mean, they had like four or five different things that they wanted to do other than just...
Yeah, I couldn't understate it enough that, like the mayor said, is the community outreach is a very large portion.
Very large portion. I'm there for it.
There's also up there, there's their actual submittals for the RFQ. There's some examples or copies of that up there on the pitch for you guys to look at if you want to flip through those for each of them. I don't know if you have it already in there.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's interesting because that came from, is that we're working on the wastewater master plan for 20 years. That's fixing to be, come to light that we're going to adopt, as well as the stormwater drainage plan, that's master comprehensive plan. And then also, we will have, you know, we'll probably go right into streets. I think we awarded a RFQ for the streets comprehensive plan to look at what the cost is going to be there. So, this comes at a time where this comprehensive plan is not just zoning, land use. It's pulling all these plans in together and so that they all work. So, we're really taking advantage of the good time that all these plans are there. They're all fresh, they're all current, and they're all going to be tied together by this comprehensive growth plan.
So, what are we looking to do tonight?
We're looking for you guys to make a recommendation for one of these to go to council.
And how are we going to do that? We just going to take a roll call vote or do that?
Yeah, we got to vote, we're going to have a motion, we're going to write it on the back of a piece of paper.
If somebody feels strongly, they can make a motion for one, and then you vote on it. And then if there's, obviously, if it balances less to the other side, then you make another motion for the other one and see if it gets the majority.
I'd make a motion for Craft and Toll.
Second motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for Craft and Toll. Any discussion on that?
They just come back to me about when they had the trouble with the airport road. Who is that? Was that Craft and Toll had not done their...
Airport Road?
It goes to the airport.
Bryant Parkway.
Was that a problem with it?
Hill Farm?
Oh, yeah. FAA came in and said, no, you can't do that. They didn't do enough research to find out what FAA...
Was that with the elementary school?
Yes, well, that was, I mean, only to be careful, it was partially to blame. They came before our planning commission, we approved it.
Right.
And we didn't realize it was a county, county road.
It was a federal, federal dollars built that road.
But, whole different subject. Any other discussion?
Before we vote, can you remind me, we have worked with Craft and Toll?
We have what?
Worked with Craft and...
We have, I know I worked with them. Kind of a funny thing is the, if you remember, the improvements we made is Hart of Bryant, that was the widen Reynolds Road and did all the aesthetics with all those portions like that. It was actually designed by Garber, but Craft and Toll provided the construction, engineering, inspection of it because by requirement, they, the engineers couldn't do that portion of it. So, they performed that and did an outstanding job, but it was, it was coming after. That's the time I worked with them. Then they did do some follow-up work. I wasn't here at that time before Bishop Parks did some design work on Bishop Parks. Dave Roberts was instrumental in the inclusive playground.
Yes.
He did a lot of work on it.
Brad Peterson did something.
At Craft and Toll?
Brad Peterson, we worked with. Brad Peterson's also done some, with the development side, and he does some stuff in the city, so be somewhere with that.
Good guy.
Brad's a great guy.
All right, so any other discussion? There is a motion and a second on Craft and Toll is the recommendation. We'll call, have a roll call vote.
Johnson?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Speed?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Hooton?
Yes.
Pinfield?
Yes.
There you go.
The other motion, so we're paying.